Brandon Rodas.
Aziz Assam.
And Norma Drummond, can I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic of our fellow citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So my first order of business is to welcome our new member, Brandon Rodas, who has now joined us on the board and just in the nick of time because we're without him right now, we would not have had a quorum. Oh, here's our other board member, okay. So, for the record, if you don't, it's roll call.
Rocco Limatone.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
So, we just did the Pledge of Allegiance, so we're just starting with business. We have a brand new board member here, top of.
How you doing?
Brandon has joined us.
Welcome, welcome. Thank you.
So our next two meetings are going to be Tuesday, July 27th, and Tuesday, August 24th. I presume that they are going to be in person. This is our first time in town hall in months, so we're going to see how it goes and obviously hoping for the best that life gets back to normal again, so I would presume they would be here, okay? And then we have one set of minutes to approve with some minor amendments. I offered a couple amendments, Rocco offered two amendments, so if there's a motion to approve the minutes of our May 25th meeting as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, good. So what happens now is we have public hearings first. These are applications that this board has already had an opportunity review, and it's going to be weird for us because again, we probably saw you on Zoom or talked to you on Zoom, but seeing you all in person, it's different again, so, and you know, so that it'll be good to really have an opportunity to chat with you a little bit about your application. So if there's anything further, the public hearing is really the opportunity for us to hear from your neighbors. So, sorry, I'm getting the microfilm cue here. So it's an opportunity for your neighbors to comment on any applications. We appreciate those of you who did get your neighbors to send letters in in advance because that really is helpful as well. After the public hearings, then we go to reviews, and those are generally the first time that we're reviewing applications. Sometimes we have seen them before and we've just asked that you provide some additional information. But normally, the regular course of business would be, we review it, and in the next meeting there's a public hearing, so we hear from your neighbors, you know, and then we make a decision on your application. So with that said, there are no decisions this evening, but item number one is a public hearing. Appeal 3993, Hector Marillo, Hector Marillo, 7 Sherwood Lane, Stormville, is requesting a two-foot height variance for an existing six-foot high fence located in the front yard pursuant to Section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So good evening.
Good evening.
We did have the opportunity to review your application last time around, and one of the things that came to our attention was that you had expanded your driveway a little bit. You had some trees came down, you know, there was concern about, they were pretty large trees, I gather, and so there was concern about, you know, coming down in a storm, and so you expanded the driveway. You say your family play basketball out there. There apparently are a number of cars there that you say are all registered.
Yes.
But, you know, your neighbors did comment that there were a number of cars, which you're allowed to have as long as they're all registered. So, you know, what we had asked though was if you could provide a landscape plan so that your neighbors, who commented about the visibility of all those cars, could have, you know, some sense of whether there would be some landscaping back. And so, I do know that you did submit a new survey where you drew on there. We asked you to outline the new area that you expanded on your driveway, so you've labeled that as a new area that is 11 feet by 22 feet, that the closest corner to Sherwood, to your property lane, not to your property line, not to Sherwood Lane itself, but to your property line, is 23 feet, and the other corner is 41.3 feet. And then what you've proposed is putting bushes around the entire paint area.
Emerald greens, the emerald green ones?
Okay, so.
Emerald greens.
Emerald greens, so are provided.
Right.
Okay. So which, as long as they're the right kind, do not become deer food. What you don't want is the kind that the deer eat.
I'm trying to figure that out. I still don't know.
And I can never keep track of the one that you just don't want because the deer like it, so just one thing to keep in mind. All right, so what we talked about last time around was this is no new fence, the fence is there already. I don't even think you didn't even put up the fence because you bought this house, the fence was there already. So the issue just came up that you're just trying to clean up the property line. The issue is that the fence is in the front of the front, I guess, because you have two front yards.
Yeah, it's weird.
That's what it is, you have two front yards. So you are on Sherwood Lane at the corner with May Crescent Road.
Correct.
And so because of that, the fence actually extends in front of the front of the house, and that's why those areas are considered in your front yard.
Okay.
So, but no new fence is going up, we're just addressing anything that's in front there. Comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
I'm good.
I'm good.
All right, good. So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Hector Marillo, 7 Sherwood Lane, Stormville, requesting a two-foot height variance for an existing six-foot high fence located in the front yard? I know we got a lot of comment last time, so we may have.
I spoke to most of my neighbors.
Okay, good. And I don't think we didn't get any additional letters for you, so. All right, so seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is appeal number 3993, applicant is Hector Marillo, requesting a two-foot height variance for the requirement of Section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance for an existing six-foot high fence located in the front yard. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Assam, whereas a prior owner installed a six-foot high white fence in the front yard of the property, and whereas this property is a corner lot located at the intersection of Sherwood Lane and May Crescent Road, and whereas the applicant removed trees at his property that posed a safety hazard after trees fell on his house, and whereas this is a type 2 action under SECCUR, and therefore, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal on May 20th, 2021, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on May 25th, 2021, and June 22nd, 2021, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the property will remain residential in nature, and the fence pre-exists the current owner, and the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to it being a corner lot. The variance would be, the variance could be deemed substantial, but this is mitigated by the fact that the property is a corner lot and most of the existing fence is four-foot, and just a small portion of the, and just a small portion at the six-foot height. And the variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Hector Marillo for a two-foot height variance from the requirement of Section 194-98 of the zoning ordinance to allow a six-foot high fence in the front yard, subject to the applicant providing a landscaping plan to provide partial screening from Sherwood Lane to be approved by the town planner. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Aziz.
Aye.
Rocco.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good evening.
You two take care.
All right, item number two. Appeal 3994, John Bronzy, 216 Judith Drive, Stormville, is requesting a 13-foot sideline variance for a proposed 33-foot by 18-foot above-ground oval pool and a 13-foot sideline variance for a proposed 41-foot by 32-foot pool deck pursuant to Section 194-95 and 194 Attachment 3 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, good evening.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm all right, thank you.
So we did have an opportunity to review this last time around. Your dilemma is that where you are septic and your leach fields are in your backyard kind of limits your ability to put your, the pool in. We did actually talk about reducing the size of the pool, but to go down one size was only about three foot, and you know, you do have four children, and you said, so you know, the extra three feet was going to make a big difference when you start putting kids on top of each other in a pool, so I get that one. So, you know, actually, and what we talked about was the direction that the pool was going in, again, to try to minimize it, and the way you put the decking was so that it wasn't extending really any further than the pool itself, right?
Right. Originally, a couple months ago, I was going to have the deck wrap around it.
Wrap around it, right.
It was going to encroach on the leach field to an extent that it would render them, I don't want to say useless, but endanger their efficiency.
Compromise them.
So we got rid of them, or got rid of that half of the deck, and now we're just, put it as close as possible to the existing deck that's there, but far enough away where they can't do anything that jumping from one deck to the other.
And so you already took the time, you met with some of your neighbors, you actually brought three letters, I think.
I actually have more too, if you would like them from other neighbors.
Well, yeah, if you have them, I'd love to read them into the record, so.
Sure.
That would be great if you have them.
You may already have one of these.
I have three.
I think the top one you already have.
Nope. The bottom one I already have.
Okay.
So that one's a double. Okay, so let me read them into the record. The first one dated, well, actually, let me ask you any questions or comments from board members.
I'm good.
No.
I'm good.
Okay, so the first one is dated May 25th, "To whom it may concern, we, the owners of the property located at 224 Judith Drive in Stormville, New York, give consent to the proposed above-ground pool and deck to be built on my neighbor's property located at 216 Judith Drive. I understand and recognize their need for the variance requested and as it will be within the setback lines along our shared property line. If you have any questions or concerns, contact them, and it's signed Nelson Gibbons and Maria Gibbons." The second one is dated June 14th. RE variance required for proposed above-ground pool or deck at 216 Judith Drive, to whom it may concern. I at the address below, recognize the need for John and Rebecca Bronzy to be granted a 13-foot sideline variance for an above-ground pool and deck, and am in support of their decision to build it at the proposed location, signed Emily Donovan. And this is at 217 Judith Drive, dated June 20th. Essentially the same.
Yeah, it was just a template.
Substance, nope, that's mine. And this one is signed from Diane Shane of 227 Judith Drive. Then we have another one dated June 14th. Again, same substance of the letter, it's because it's pretty much a form letter that they just had to fill out the sign and fill out the bottom, so this one is from Jeff Sarar.
Yes.
At 210 Judith Drive. Then we have another dated June 14th, same substance, from Margaret and Richard Korinsky?
Korinsky.
Korinsky, okay, thank you.
I hope so, if they're watching at home, I hope I pronounce it right.
At 208 Judith Drive. So I think we've covered the neighborhood pretty well, and then the last one is June 14th. Again, same substance of the letter, and this one is from James Panzer, and this is 219 Judith Drive. So what I'm going to do, Aziz or Brandon, one of you, if you could pass these other letters on to Jackie so she has them for the record. Is there anything else you wish to offer before we ask if there are any other neighbors that are here?
No, I mean, just regarding like the sizing of the pool, those three feet, like when you look at the area of it, it is, it is significant. It's three feet, even if I didn't went down a size, I'd still be here for a variance.
Right, that was the.
Right, and it's, but it's 30% bigger, that three feet allows the area to be almost a third bigger. So that space really does go very far, so that would probably be.
No, it gives you a lot more usable space, and the hope would be you'd get a lot of years of use out of it, so.
So.
Okay, so with that said, is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from John Bronzy, 216 Judith Drive, Stormville, requesting a 13-foot sideline variance for a proposed 33-foot by 18-foot above-ground oval pool and a 13-foot sideline variance for a proposed 41-foot by 32-foot pool deck? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Rocco?
This is appeal number 3994, applicant is John Bronzy. "A 13-foot sideline variance for a proposed 33-by-18 above-ground oval pool from the requirements of Section 194-95 of the Town Code. And two, a 13-foot sideline variance for a proposed 41-by-32 pool deck from the requirements of Schedule of Bulk Regulations, the variances. This is located at 216 Judith Drive in Stormville. Resolution being offered by zoning board member Rocco Limatone. Whereas the applicant wishes to install an above-ground pool, and whereas there are limited areas on the property where a pool could be installed due to the location of septic infrastructure and the driveway, and whereas the proposed oval shape of the pool limits some of the impacts of the proposed pool, and whereas the applicant has submitted a plan showing proposed landscaping to screen the pool from his neighbors, and whereas this is a type 2 action under SECRA, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal on June 16th, 2021, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on June 22nd, 2021, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the applicant plans to screen the pool. The desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the location of septic infrastructure and the driveway. The variances could be deemed substantial, but this is mitigated by the fact that any pool that the applicant would install would require variance and screening would be installed. The variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions as the proposed pool location does not impact septic infrastructure. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request of John Bronzy for one, a 13-foot sideline variance for a proposed 33-by-18 above-ground oval pool from the requirements of Section 194-95 of the Town Code. And two, a 13-foot sideline variance for a proposed 41-by-32 pool deck from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner. Resolution second by zoning board member.
Aziz Assam.
Votes as follows, Aziz.
Aye.
Rocco.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries, now you'll deal with the building department.
Thank you very much.
All right, have a good evening.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right, item number three, appeal 3998, John Willman, 239 East Hook Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a variance for a proposed eight-foot by 10-foot shed to be located in the front yard pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Evening.
So we did have the opportunity to meet.
Motion open the.
Oh, thank you. Motion open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See, they're all here to keep me honest. All right, so we did have a chance to talk with you last month about what you were proposing to do. You're only, you're only looking for a small shed, it's eight-foot by 10, you said it was for the snow blower, for your lawn mower, for regular lawn maintenance and house maintenance things. Your house is set really far back from East Hook Road?
Yeah, it's 161 feet from the road to the shed.
To where the shed would be.
And it's going up, you can just barely see the top of my house, and the shed is not that high, you know, so.
Right, so, and you said you had gas tanks on the one side of the house?
Right.
So, and a generator and stuff, and so it was, would be difficult for you to be, and there's a garden on the other side, so that's why it would be difficult for you to be able to get to what you need in that shed to get it into the front of the house where you're, is really going to use it. So the fact that it was screened well from the road, nobody was going to be able to see it anyway, I think this board allowed this to go to public hearings, so. Are there any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good, I'm good.
I have nothing, I'm good.
I'm good as well.
Okay, is there anything else you want to offer? Is there anything else you want to say?
No.
Okay, so is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from John Willman, 239 East Hook Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a variance for a proposed eight-foot by 10-foot shed to be located in the front yard? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is appeal number 3998, applicant is John Philman, requesting a variance for the requirement of Section 194-107 of the Town Code to allow an eight-foot by 10-foot shed to be located in the front yard. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Assam, whereas the applicant wishes to install an eight-foot by 10-foot shed in the front yard to store property maintenance equipment, and whereas installing the shed in the front yard would allow the applicant easier access than in the rear yard due to the shape and terrain of the property, and whereas the shed would be screened by trees and would be set back over 150 feet from the road, and whereas this is a type 2 action under SECCUR, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal on June 16th, 2021, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on June 22nd, 2021, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the shed will be screened, the desired results cannot be achieved by some other means due to the layout of the property, the variance requested is not substantial, the variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by John Willman for a variance for the requirement of Section 194-107 of the Town Code to allow an eight-foot by 10-foot shed to be located in the front yard. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So votes as follows, Aziz.
Aye.
Rocco.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries, okay, you're all set, now you'll just deal with the building department. Not tonight, not tonight.
Not tonight, okay.
Actually, it's an eight-foot by 10-foot shed, does he need a permit?
Because it has the variance, yes.
Because of the variance, okay, yes, okay. All right, have a good evening.
Good night.
All right, and our last public hearing of the evening is item number four, appeal 4,000, Thomas Doyle, 45 Wright Boulevard, Hopewell, requesting a nine-foot left, nine-foot left sideline variance for an existing 168-foot pool deck and a 17-foot left sideline variance for an existing 27-foot above-ground round pool pursuant to Section 194-95 and 194-Attachment 3 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So good evening.
Aye.
We did have the opportunity again to review your application last month. What you told us was that you've lived in this house for over 40 years, or almost 40 years at this point.
Since 73.
Yeah, and so this pool probably went up around 1979, and at the time you were not aware that pools needed a permit or sideline variances or anything like that, which is likely, and actually, at the time, the pool sideline might have only been 10 feet, right? Because at one point, the pool sideline was only 10-foot required, yeah, so.
It changed.
It definitely changed, and I want to say that they changed sometime in like middle 80s, so, so it might not even necessarily have required as much of a variance as it does right now, but, but the pool's been there, your neighbors have not complained about it, though at least not that you've told us that they have.
Right.
But at this point, you just want to clean up the variances, you were trying to get the shed amnesty, and that's when the town brought it to your attention that the pool didn't have a permit. So again, we're just trying to clean this up. We're not going to ask you to move a pool at this point, so.
Well, again, it's a septic system, that plays into it.
Okay, well, that's good, that's good to know that for the record.
That was the best, the only place to put it.
That that was the reason it went where it went, so. So are any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
No, I'm good, I have no questions.
I'm good.
So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Thomas Doyle, 45 Wright Boulevard, Hopewell, requesting a nine-foot left sideline variance for an existing 168-square-foot pool deck and a 17-foot left sideline variance for an existing 27-foot above-ground round pool? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Rocco, you want to go?
Appeal, this is appeal number 4,000, 4,000,000. Applicant is Thomas Doyle. He's requesting, one, a nine-foot sideline variance from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations to allow an existing 168-square-foot pool deck, and two, a 17-foot left sideline variance for an existing 27-foot above-ground pool from the requirements of Section 194-195 of the Town Code, the variances. Location is 45 Wright Boulevard in Hopewell Junction. Resolution's being offered by zoning board member Rocco Limatone. Whereas the pool has existed since 1979, and whereas the applicant has voluntarily applied to the ZBA to bring the property into conformance, whereas this is a type 2 action under SECRA, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Poughkeepsie Journal on June 16th, 2021, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a meeting, a public hearing, June 22nd, 2021, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the pool has existed for decades, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means due to the layout of the property. The variances requested could be deemed substantial, but are mitigated by the screening provided by landscaping. The variances will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request by Thomas Doyle for a, one, nine-foot sideline variance from the requirements of the Schedule of Bulk Regulations to allow an existing 168-square-foot pool deck, and two, a 17-foot left sideline variance for an existing 26-foot above-ground pool from the requirements of Section 194-95 of the Town Code. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Aziz.
Aye.
Rocco.
Aye.
Brandon.
Aye.
And myself, aye. So your motion carries, you're all set.
So now I'll, we'll get the permits.
Now you'll deal with the building department.
And take care of the violations that they found, okay. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome, have a good evening.
Have a good night.
I guess I'm a slow worker since 1973.
Thank you.
Good night, Alan.
Good night.
Good night. All right, so that's it for public hearings this evening, so now we get down to the real work that gets done during the review process. If the public hearings looked easy, it's because we did a lot of work ahead of time, okay? So the first application that's up is item number five, appeal 3988, Manuel Bravo, 168 Old Sylvan Lake Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 19-foot left sideline variance and a 12-foot right sideline variance for an existing dwelling, a 19-foot sideline variance for an existing deck, a variance for a proposed pool to be located in the front yard, and a two-foot height variance for a proposed six-foot fence to be located in the front yard pursuant to Sections 194-98, 194-107, and 194-95 of the zoning ordinance. and one ninety-four dash ninety-five of the zoning ordinance. So, no public hearing to open in this one. See, we actually did start discussing this one last month, right?
Uh, the month before.
I need to ask, is Old Sylvan Lake Road, is that a town road or is that a county road? Okay, so is the town, it's, okay. Just making sure it's not subject to larger variances. Okay, so we did get... I think we did, making sure we got the right information. So we have a, what do you have here, and a...
Yeah, there's a, there should be landscape plan, new site plan.
That's what I think the figure thing is, right?
Yeah.
Should be three there.
I brought the landscape plan here, and then I took a picture of the overhead so we could show you the existing trees and stuff. I don't remember, the elderly gentleman on the Zoom thing asked for those things last time.
Okay. Okay, so you're on a corner lot.
Mm-hmm.
You're on the corner of Old Sylvan Lake Road and Brody Road. So you actually have two front yards.
Yep.
That's part of what we're dealing with.
Yep.
And so...
And then the house in a very strange location.
The layout of the house, of the land, land is really...
Yeah, really, really weird lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's...
Yeah, it's like this large...
You've got a weird square, and then you've got a tail as if it was a flag lot, but it's not connect, that end of the flag, the pole is not connected to a road, it's just going back somewhere.
Very weird.
And it's only fifty feet wide at the back there, it's really weird.
Yeah.
Um, so your driveway is actually on Old Sylvan Lake Road.
Correct.
So takes you back to this, and so the way the house is, and this, the deck, I guess, existing wood deck to be rebuilt.
Yeah.
That's, in doing that, that's when we discovered this house itself is actually too close to that property line.
Yeah, and the existing deck was actually closer than what we proposed for the new deck. We brought the new deck back, and the stairs stuck out. It was like seven inches away from the property line on one part.
Wow.
And so we took the stair away and brought it to the middle of the house on the other, you know, in the center, next to the driveway on the right instead of the left, to alleviate that problem.
And then there's a concrete walk.
Yeah, then there's a small concrete walk that neanders around and goes actually over the property line in that little back strip, and goes all the way into the back strip area. The whole area a long time ago was a campground. So I think when they divided this up, they divi- very strangely.
Yeah, well, that was, so they probably had to get the required acreage in there, and the only way to do it was to give you that tail there.
Yeah, yeah, that little strip, yeah.
Okay, so the concrete pad, though, the concrete area there, is that what's nineteen feet away from the property line? How far is that concrete area? Because if we consider that a patio, it...
The existing concrete area or the one around the pool?
No, the existing one next to your house, in front of the house.
Uh, no. That's, um, no, that's not nineteen from the property line.
All right, that's...
So it's part of, it's on the property line?
Part of the concrete is actually on the...
Yeah, so, yeah, like if you see. Like this area right, it goes this way, goes over the property line, in that back, in that back strip that goes this way?
Yeah.
Goes over the property line and goes back. It's very weird, the walkway.
And even your driveway is through your neighbor's property, or?
No, the driveway's right, it's very weird.
Yeah, so the part I was talking about was right where your finger is now.
Yeah.
That concrete area, how close to that property line?
Nineteen feet.
That is, okay, that's what I was talking about, nineteen feet, okay?
Yeah.
So because a patio only requires the fifteen feet, so that patio does, well, consider it a patio, does not need a variance. Okay, but he has a concrete walk that goes off of his property.
Yeah, and because we're fencing that line, so it's going to be abandoned, it's going to stop there.
Is that the one that says asphalt walk?
Yeah.
Yeah, but technically, it's on your neighbor's property, so it's...
It's theirs, so we're not touching, we're not touching that, we're not touching that.
They can always do a boundary line agreement, but that'll be between those two parties.
Yeah, that's not our, I'm not gonna... But the, so the concrete walk, though, goes right to the...
Edge.
Property line. It's a walk, though, not, I mean, a lot of walks go right to the property line.
It, it's a walk, it's, it's...
It's on a patio, it's definitely not, that's not a patio.
It's only this way.
Yeah.
It's very narrow.
Understood. So the pool itself... So this is the location of the pool, the proposed pool?
Yes.
That pool is not there now?
No.
And so you're talking about a thirty-foot-by-twenty-foot pool?
Correct.
Okay, and then you're proposing a minimum patio around it?
Yep.
It appears to be five feet around.
Yeah, on three sides, and then eight feet on the, on the house side.
So it keeps you twenty-five feet from the one property line?
Mm-hmm.
But that's for the pool, or that's for the patio?
That's the patio, thirty foot for the pool.
Okay, all right, good. And then the other side has the, has a larger eight-foot where the gate is to get into the pool area.
Yeah, which is about twenty-four and change from the corner of the house.
Okay, so, but we also have a shed.
Yeah, which is, uh, which is fifteen feet from the property line.
I'm seeing ten.
No, fifteen.
No, fifteen.
Uh, you should use the new one.
No, the one that, yeah, the new one that, you remember the one in the...
I'm giving you this one.
Okay. Yeah, because this is the one that I have.
No, this is, this is the new one. Yeah, this is fifteen, and this is...
It's fifteen, okay. It's ten foot wide, okay.
No, it was hand drawn, this is updated.
Okay. So is there anything else that looks out of sorts? That's all I'm trying to get to.
Uh, the fence, the fence that goes on between the two property lines that comes to the front yard, that's, we're asking for that because it's six feet high. Well, proposed to be six feet high. Yeah. And then we planting all of these, this landscape in the front to screen the pool and the, on Brody. That cluster in the middle is existing, so we're trying to create, this cluster area is existing, sort of large cluster of heavy, big-sized trees. We want to take the street that's very close to the property line here, create an arc with, uh, every trees.
Okay.
That screen the pool right here.
I mean, it's to your benefit.
Can we see that?
You'll enjoy the pool more when you have screening there and, you know. Right, okay.
So they're, you know, they're just, so they're going to remove the one or the trees and...
Right.
Yeah, that's a tail.
Actually, the walkway is on this side.
Yes, it's on this.
Yeah, it's on this, yeah.
Yeah, it's on this side, that's... Looks like there's multiple concrete walks that would connect a bunch of the houses around there.
And, oh, that's on the other side, like I said, it's, it's a campground. The houses are, like, there's one in the front, there's one in the back, there's one in the front, there's one in the back.
Yeah.
There's, it was a campground.
When they were building them, all of a sudden, they found something off, so they moved it a little bit. That's what ends up happening.
Well, it might have been a converted summer bungalow community, I think that's really more of what it was.
I think you're right.
Yeah.
Yep.
That, that happens a lot, so.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember way back when my cousin lived in the, off eighty-two over there, so right, right before they built the condos?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I can't remember back that far.
Okay, all right, so comments or questions? The only question I had was whether it's nineteen feet or twenty feet.
The walkway?
No, whether one of the variances they need, you need. The deck, how far is the deck?
Twenty-five.
The deck is twenty-five.
Twenty-five, I mean, well...
Five feet from the deck.
Twenty-five.
No, the existing deck.
No, the existing deck was, it's, to the stairwell was seven inches.
But it's five-point-nine?
Yeah, so the new deck, the new deck's five-point-nine on the shortest side.
So it needs a twenty-foot variance?
Correct.
Not nineteen feet.
Well, nineteen feet, seven inches.
We do it in whole feet.
I got you.
We do it in whole feet.
I got you.
So it needs a twenty-foot variance, Jackie, not nineteen. Okay, so for one...
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay, the other side...
Is seven, or six.
Yeah, the other, the other side, you have a little bit more room there, so. So that was the only correction that I had. Is the six-foot fence going to impact any site distance? I don't think so.
I mean, it's already in the wooded area, so...
Here, is this going to impact site distance on the road? Where is the driveway for your neighbor?
They don't, there's no driveways. That, from what I see, what I saw, it's, well, there's no driveways over there, there's not. There's no driveway.
They are in the street.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so there's, because, because you wouldn't want to put up a fence if your neighbor, it then blocks his ability to pull out, to pull out his driveway.
Yeah, no, no, yeah.
So if there's no site distance issue?
Oh, yeah.
Then it makes the, the six-foot fence a lot easier.
So they, all the neighbors up there have, they park on the street?
They park right on, if you want to call it the street, they actually park on their grass area, that little front strip on, on Brody.
So even in the winter, they're parking on the street?
Yeah.
When they're not supposed to be parking on town roads?
Summertime only.
What?
They're only there in summer.
It's only during the summer.
They actually park on the opposite side, that house that's, that's closest to this one right here, they actually park here on this side, on the north side. The house that's here?
Yeah.
On Brody, they park here, in between the two houses.
Okay.
Okay.
I guess they, I guess they have a gravel thing there or something that, it's like right off the street.
Okay. It looks like it might be under a tree, so we're not necessarily...
Yeah, it is under a very big tree.
Interesting.
But you can definitely tell there's traps on the grass there, that somebody's been parking closer to the house there. All right, comments or questions for board members?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, um, so...
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any questions.
Motion to advertise?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the only thing is you're going to need two signs, because you, again, you've got two front yards, okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so just in case any, if you have the opportunity to talk to your neighbors between now and then, that would be helpful, but if they come, these are wonderful maps and aerials to see. Um, I mean, we can keep it in the file if you want, or just bring it next month again, okay? That's great, thank you. You can, actually, just hand it off to Jackie.
Yeah, but as long as we have it for the public hearing.
Yeah, Jackie has it, then.
Yeah.
Public hearing, people are going to ask the same questions.
Right, you want them to be able to see what we just saw, because it makes, makes it much easier to understand.
Yeah.
It was good representation.
Don't try to get like the gentleman.
Yeah, Jim, yeah.
He'll be back next week.
Yeah, very good idea.
Next one.
Thank you guys. Thank you. Thanks for the info.
Okay, so, next. Appeal three nine nine nine, Stacy Fleischer, One Barrett Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a twenty-foot rear line variance for a one-hundred-and-twenty-square-foot deck, a thirty-five-foot front line variance for a one-hundred-square-foot front porch, a twenty-nine-foot front line variance on Barrett Drive, and an eight-foot sideline variance on Hosner Mountain Road for the existing dwelling, a forty-one-foot rear line variance for an existing five-hundred-and-forty-square-foot deck while pursuant to section one ninety-four, attachment three of the zoning ordinance.
Hi.
That's a lot, so let's, um...
Well, it's not what it started out as.
Okay, so this is the first time we're seeing your application. So we really have to take through this. And you got us a new survey, which is helpful.
And the proposed deck and porch are on the new survey.
I'm sorry, Jackie? Jackie, you might have to take that outside, like, um, say that again?
The proposal for the rear deck and the front porch are put onto the new survey.
Okay. And I'm just seeing that Ray, the building inspector, went out and did a site inspection. So there's a fifty-four-foot, fifty-four-inch fence in the front yard around the pool.
That was all part of the pool when they did that, and they get, we had the CO for it all.
So it's got a CCCO for the pool, whatever, with that deck, with that fence in the front yard? Okay, so we're going to have to add a one-foot height variance to the... Right, because it's a, it's in the front yard, it's, it should only, it needs to get to the...
It's a corner lot.
It's a corner lot, that's where everything...
Okay, yeah, so you're on Hosner Mountain Road and Barrett Drive. We've got another concrete walk here. It labels a fence, but it's not telling me how tall that fence is.
The fence that goes on the side of Hosner Mountain?
Yeah.
It's four, it's forty-eight inches.
Okay. So you've got a shed in the back, a deck, it doesn't give...
The shed has, has, I had a variance.
Okay, and how about the deck?
The deck, we, was done when the pool was done, we assumed that it was all under one.
That's why you need the forty-one foot. So it's, again, what?
It's not, they have just the front of the pool, not the deck.
Okay, so, but it should say an existing square-foot deck around the pool, right? Is this an above-ground pool or an in-ground pool?
It's semi-in, it's a radiant pool, so half of it's down.
Is the deck above ground or is the deck on radiant?
The deck actually is like five and a half, six inches off the ground.
So it's a deck, not a patio, that's what I'm getting at? Okay.
Deck patio.
Okay.
If it's off the ground.
Well, a patio requires less of a variance, that's what I'm getting at, so the... Okay, so we've got to give it the right variance.
That's, okay, I was giving it for the patio, not the...
No, I don't think so, I think you've got it...
Now, you had told me forty-one feet.
Oh, from the rear line, hold on. Which do you consider to be the rear line? I don't know which side you're pointing to. That's the rear line, okay? Because the house is facing Barrett Drive, okay?
Yeah, that makes sense.
So that's why it's, it's got to get to the fifty instead of the twenty-five, okay? So that is, Jackie, you do have that right, but if you can just label it as the deck around the pool? Or pool deck, whatever it is. Okay, so then we get to the shed that you already have the variance for.
Yep.
We get to the, let's start from the beginning, rear line variance for a one-hundred-and-twenty-square-foot deck. So that's the house, that's the deck that's labeled as proposed.
Yes.
Jackie, again, can we label that as proposed? Okay. Even if we took those steps and incorporated them in or turned them around, you'd still need the, the deck itself is what needs the variance, so it doesn't make sense to move those steps. What is, there's a, there's a rectangle that's marked CONC, C-O-N-C.
That's right out the back door. There's a concrete slab that's been there for, I've lived there since I was twelve, it's been there forever.
It's been there forever, okay.
Well, that used to be a garage, but there was no way you could access.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
The same thing with the concrete slab off the driveway, as long as I can remember, that's always been there.
It says remove or remove?
Yeah, something is labeled as removed, what was removed?
What was removed?
Concrete slab by the garage.
Thank you.
That was where you had the carport attached to then, where you would have checked, and it was, um, by the driveway?
Oh, that concrete slab? Oh, okay.
Can you remove it?
No, that concrete slab is there.
The carport was removed.
But the old ser...
Everything that was on it was all removed, right, very fast.
Oh, yeah, there's nothing there.
Yeah, there's nothing.
And there wasn't shed there years ago, but when we got...
Okay, I'm a little confused, okay? This is, this is, the survey is dated April twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, okay? And it says concrete slab removed, but the survey is showing it up as there, so is it there or is it...
Where does it say, see, my copy doesn't say removed.
No, I, I think, well, the carport was removed, that part, yeah.
Oh, okay, all right, I'm sorry.
So the slab is just there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Somebody wrote in the word removed.
Yeah.
The slab is there, the stuff on the slab.
The shed, there was lots of, on that...
When the original survey was done.
Okay.
All of it was removed.
But the survey, the revised survey shows it's there.
No, not the slab, everything else on top of it is slab.
The slab is still there, but everything else was removed.
That's all.
Jackie, did everybody get this new survey? Because I have a survey that's different than what Aziz has. Mine is dated, added dimensions on six eleven twenty-one.
This is twenty-two.
Okay.
Turned it.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah. No, really?
No, the survey was updated on six four.
Added dimension.
Would you like my copy, sir?
And they added the dimensions on June eleventh.
Six eleven, yeah.
All right.
All right.
So twenty-eight foot rear line variance for the one hundred, so that's, you got, we get the deck, then we have the thirty-five foot front line variance for the front porch. But that one's got stairs that are only fifteen feet, three inches out. So that needs more than thirty-five feet. We need the ex, that's only fifteen. Okay, that's, as you're, it's fifty feet on that side, so it would be, that would be thirty-five feet, okay, oh my God, this is...
I'm sorry.
No, 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 it's just, it's, 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 there's a lot going on here and just
It, yes.
getting the measurements right for each side.
I mean, the house, the house doesn't even fit.
Thirty-five and fifteen is fifty.
Because the stairs are still gonna stay there, I got you.
The stairs are...
Those are the stairs for the, the new proposed porch would be there.
Okay, I got you, right.
Twenty-five foot front line variance and an eight foot front line for the existing dwelling.
It's fifteen point three.
Should be sixteen, actually.
Yeah.
Well, the closest point is twenty-four point feet, seven inches, so it's, we've gotta match that, so it's gotta be twenty-five feet. But like...
I think it's twenty-two on the other corner. Yeah, one is twenty-five and the other is twenty-two.
Because it's twenty-five for the porch, but it's twenty-nine for the house, that's where she's coming from. Okay, so twenty-nine feet is right, because it's twenty-one, three, so twenty-one and twenty-nine is the fifty. And then it's eight foot on Hosner Mountain Road, because we're at forty-two feet, five inches, so forty-two and the eight feet gets us to fifty, good. Okay. I think we're good. And all of this is here already?
Everything is there except the proposed deck and the proposed porch.
And so what's the purpose of the...
I have taken pictures, I have cement steps for the front and the back that have been repaired at least three times.
Okay.
They are crumbling.
Okay.
And I'm not...
This is what, the back steps. Okay. I don't know if you can see it.
Yeah, we can see it.
I see.
And the front ones.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, and it's a safety hazard.
Yeah.
And we figured if we're gonna do it, let's just do something that's gonna look decent.
Right.
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay.
Okay, that's good.
But you're adding a deck to it as, as well as the...
Instead of doing a sit back, they figured maybe to a deck, then it'll hold on a lot better.
So you could actually, you could actually have a little area to, to...
To sit and...
Where is that? That's where?
That's now the back of the house.
That was the front and the back. The first picture was the back, the second picture was the front.
So it's the front and the back?
Yeah.
Oh, so you, okay, you have proposed porches for both areas?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good.
So the stairs I'm seeing in the picture...
I throw up my hands on this one, I think we're good.
This is proposed porch.
And proposed porch, right.
So the stairs I'm seeing in the picture and proposed porch, those stairs are actually there?
Those are what's there right now, that we would
Okay.
demolish and get rid of for safety reasons.
Got you.
The request doesn't affect the environment in any shape or form.
And the steps for that, uh, front proposed porch is going to be part of the concrete sidewalk?
No, they're gonna be out of wood and trex.
Okay.
Where is your, um, septic?
Hosner Mountain roadside.
Okay, that's why you've got of the large
Yeah.
grassy area over that side.
Yeah, that beautiful grassy area. I wish the rest of my yard looked that good.
All right. Motion to advertise?
Did we get all the dimensions and everything?
Yes, that's what I think we're doing.
Motion to advertise?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, so again, you're gonna need two signs, because you're, you've got two front yards.
Yep.
Wow.
Sorry, and it's a small property.
Julie, because it's, it's a lot to just figure out, making sure everything is, is as it should be, so it's good.
We'll get you rolling.
Now, should I have neighbors, right?
Oh, hold on, and Jackie, make sure you add about the fence, the extra foot for the fifty-four inch fence.
Yeah.
Okay, because it's in the front yard. So it's a, five, we'll give her a, a variance for a five foot fence in the front of the house, in the front yard. Okay, any questions?
No, I have none.
Okay, good, we'll see you next month.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Okay, item number seven. Appeal four thousand and one, Tim McLaughlin, Two Twenty-five Buttonwood Way, Hopewell Junction, requesting an eight foot rear line variance for a proposed twenty-two foot by thirty foot in-ground pool pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety-five of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so Buttonwood, you're in...
Four corners.
Corners, okay. So it looks like you went to get the permit and they, it looks like they, and they stopped it.
No, we knew we needed a variance.
Oh, you need, okay.
It just got declined and the process rolled on.
But you did take it to your homeowners association.
Yep.
Okay, and so they are, they give their approval for the variance of the seven feet, three inches for the rear yard. Um, does it make a difference that the HOA gives for seven feet, three inches and we're gonna give them for eight feet?
I don't think so, just, because we have to round up and we're giving the variance, so I think, within the benefit of the doubt.
I mean, as long as the pool gets put in the, in the place that's authorized by what the HOA does. Okay, so again, you're in an area where the homes have smaller lots, it was done as a cluster subdivision, so it was, um, what is behind you on the side? Oh, you're, you're against open space, that's what it is.
Open space woods can't be built.
Okay.
Setbacks on the, the side yards are perfect.
Yep, you, you don't need any, you don't need anything there, so...
Motion to advertise?
Yeah, I'm not seeing any issue with this one, so...
I second.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye, and you only need one sign because you're not on a corner lot.
Right. Thank you, board.
All right, we'll see you next month.
Good evening.
Number eight, appeal four thousand and two, Angel and Erica Duran, uh, Two Fenton Way, Hopewell Junction, requesting an eight foot rear line variance for an existing three hundred and seventy-two square foot patio pursuant to section one ninety-four, attachment three of the zoning ordinance. And honestly, you guys must be neighbors, okay, because the right, the next one, appeal four thousand and three, Pamela and Jose Bayon, um, For Fenton Way, Hopewell Junction, requesting a twelve foot rear line variance for an existing four hundred and forty-four square foot patio pursuant to section one ninety-four, attachment three of the zoning ordinance. We're gonna take these together, I have pictures of you, that the board members do not have. Apparently, as you guys were buying your homes, you, um, must have asked them to put in patios.
Yeah.
Okay, so you dealt with the Toll Brothers Landscaping Group, okay, whatever it is. Oh, you're here, oh, good. Because this shouldn't have happened.
You're correct, it shouldn't have, but the, the basic drawing that we got from our engineer
Could, could come closer to the microphone, that's all.
Didn't have the setbacks.
And identify yourself, please.
Nick DiAgostino, Toll Landscape.
Thank you.
Didn't have the setbacks on it for the town. Um, and it's all open space back there, so
Right.
we didn't even think anything twice about it, so...
Okay, so number one, welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you.[1735.72]